So they were just starting their agenda.
Cameron, I was getting, I was getting ready to have some.
So, yeah.
Yep.
So I don't know, I know Justin got a new number, I guess at some point. Cause I haven't been able to get a hold of him in a little bit and I haven't really seen him. And so I kinda thought maybe, I thought maybe he wasn't here. And then when, when Eric called me, he's like, oh, I can't get a hold of him either. And I'm like, wow, so I just basically went, well, I'm the wastewater guy. So I say, go for it. Cause I had all a couple of council members gonna get a hold of them. So I'm like, I say, just do it.
Yeah, Charlie, Charlie, when Charlie called me, Fisher, he, when he called me, he said, he goes, I heard the, the city guy quit and you guys.
He, he said that to me.
No, no.
Okay, yeah.
Part-time guy quit.
Yeah, okay. Cause he said that, cause I didn't tell him that. He said that to me and I'm like, oh, well, I hadn't heard that. And so.
Yeah. He, he is now on the city phone, not his personal phone.
Okay.
And you don't have that number, we can make sure.
He, he called me like the next day or the day, whatever it was. So I have it now. So it's no big deal. But yeah, the number I had for him apparently wasn't, wasn't valid anymore. So.
How funny game, right?
I have that signed agreement for you.
Yeah.
So.
Brian, this claims list for this alter for general maintenance for nineteen forty-two, is that for up down at the sewer pond? Sewer plant?
That's for the generator on there, yeah.
Okay. That's what I figured out.
So I have basically on the residential.
Um, it was under, um, citizen contact us form.
Oh, okay. Okay, it is six thirty. Let's call meeting to order. Um, starting with approval of agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
I think.
Opposed? Then. Approval of consent agenda.
Didn't we have done golf course?
Oh, sorry. You are correct.
I thought you were scared.
Okay, so roll call. Poojil.
Here.
Fine.
Here.
Stag.
Here.
Henick.
Here.
Roter.
Count zed up?
No, not zed.
Okay.
So it's a track to get on, so.
Okay, so say anybody on here?
Uh, no one is on.
Okay, so now that I back on the sequence here, approval of consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda. If you wanna move one item out of.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, discuss item G down the, at the end of the meeting. Just so that we can say, I mean, since we got a letter, we should probably at least, uh, say what we're doing about it or whatever.
Yeah, um.
I mean, just to, just with.
I'm just trying to be able to do that.
Yes, you can make a motion and move something.
Strike an item out of the consent agenda.
Okay, I'd like to strike item G to discuss.
Put it in business.
Put it, put it in our business.
Okay. At the end of.
Is that done as a vote?
Or make a new motion? Uh, motion to approve consent agenda after moving one item G to business.
Second.
Anyway, the role.
Poojil.
Hi.
Fine.
Hi.
Henick.
Hi.
Stag.
Hi.
Okay, so moved. Moving down to public comment. Nothing at the moment?
Nothing on me.
Okay. Roter reports. We'll go with sheriff first. Anything going on in your world?
Nope. What? Dude, you'll say it loud a little bit.
How, how has the Wednesday nights been going? Are they slowing down for you guys or is the crowds consistent?
I usually, I don't work evenings usually, uh, so I don't know much about it. I'm not hearing much. So a lot of times down there is good news, I guess. Um, seems like they're still doing stuff, but I think you feel a little proactive on stuff, but. I'm gonna ask you guys what you guys are thinking. You guys are in town, you guys hear everybody talking, so.
Do you, have you heard if you think the barricades are helping out at all that we, we set up them? Think they're setting them up at full plans, aren't they?
Mm-hmm. I worked the first night that they put those out, you know, just, I don't know what it was like before. I'm, I'm sure it just stops. Uh, cars going through down there, you know, I'm sure it helps out as far as, I mean, it, it was nobody has, so but. Um, there was a gauze that they driving through there, but that was not a big giveaway, but.
Yeah, I was, I was just more concerned about the, the neighbors to the, uh, south were complaining about the cars all. And, and the stuff being down there. I didn't know, maybe that put kind of a little kibosh to that, you know, or not.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard anything.
Okay, well, I don't think we have either. Have we got?
I talked to the homeowners to the south this past weekend. They said that they had an incident, I wanna say it was last Wednesday. Um, a bunch of kids were, they were at the dance, were playing football on the street or something and like blocking the road. So they called the sheriff's office, they said, um, and then they saw sheriff coming up. So they told dispatcher or whatever that someone was there and I guess the sheriff just drove on by, didn't say anything to the kids or anything, which they're like, so then they called back and that another one out there, but, um, and we just dispersed the kids off the street, I think was their complaint, but.
Yeah.
Um.
Anything else for the sheriff?
There's a check on too, is, I know, I think you guys approved to go through October.
Yeah.
I didn't know. I know it's not an agenda, so I know that's, you guys can talk about it or whatever, but.
We can still. I think in a few, probably not the next meeting.
It's a long.
We have to at the next meeting.
That's why I was kinda, even if it was like a hidden, I like, I think, as long as, if you think it is, maybe we'll schedule it, but if you change your mind.
Well, I will think they're probably gonna continue to November, would be my best. Before it gets cold.
I mean.
I should put it on, uh, next agenda to actually make a motion, but.
Okay.
That's, I could see us going through November.
Okay.
Engineer?
Thank you, thank you.
I'll look into that too.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, sanitary sewer project, they did the overseeing of the, uh, most of the, uh, kind of bare spots throughout that project. Unfortunately, it hasn't rained that much, so I don't think there's much germination of it yet. Um, it sounds like maybe this week that can change, so we'll see. Um, we also had the line on third street from the last intake up to the creek where there's been a white substance, basically boring gel coming out of that. Uh, the video pretty clearly shows it kind of bubbling up through the bottom of the joints of pipe. So looks like we might have to work with contractor, maybe go back. You know, take a look at where the gas man is crossing underneath the, the storm sewer, maybe go in there and put in some kind of cutoff in that area. And, uh, see if we can stop it.
Close, you, you think it's at all the seams still?
It's not coming up every one of them. Vincent just had the last pipe basically from Essex to the grid. So some of the joints, uh, look good. There's probably maybe every other one of them or every third one is, is kinda coming up and so. Those joints say they don't have gaskets, cause your storm sewer is kinda supposed to take water.
Right.
Um, so a lot of joints are wrapped with like a fabric to keep the.
Yeah, like a fiber mesh or something.
Exactly, yeah. Keep, keep, uh, you know, sand and dirt coming through it. It won't stop this still, so, um. Yeah, so we're working with contractor on that to.
That Dave Schmidt? Is that, you're cutting out for the city? Yeah.
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 Okay. Do you happen to know, Tim, we're talking about seeding, you happen to know if they got along that, that crack line down by grinders and iron sides? If they overseeded that or at all? I haven't had a chance to talk to Mark, cause he just got back, but.
I know, I know. I'm pretty sure they were supposed to, so I would assume they got it on, so I can check on that for sure. But they supposedly did everywhere that was needed, so I'll, I'll ask. Um, I also know, uh, Kevin, our inspector was out there again today.
Yeah, I seen Kevin.
Yeah, he was going through the punch list again, just to, to update it, to see if most everything's done or not, so. Um. The Rosen storms, the Rosen first, uh, storm sewer, uh, yeah, the contract had been sent back to us from contractor with their signature. It sounds like the Meriden signed it today. Uh, their late start date is supposed to be the twenty-ninth of this month, so we would expect that to start going here pretty quick, you know, we can return the signed contact, contract to them. Um, the streets project, literally everything's done and paid for with the exception, there's supposed to be a bollard out here beside the guide wire that's coming down off this one pole. And they tell me they're gonna have it done every week and they're gonna have it done every week. Well, spend it two months, so.
Just a steel bollard or a cement bollard or what are you?
It's, it's a, yeah, it's a steel bollard.
Mm-hmm.
And it has like a, um, encasement on it, so it doesn't look so handsome. Anyway, that's all that needs to be done, so I keep working on them. I don't really, they're a good contractor for the city. They've done that project every year for multiple years, so I don't like to threaten them, you know, but, uh, maybe we'll have to. A little more force to look at, so. Uh, the region five televising, we've reviewed the video and are preparing a list of recommendations. And to be honest with you, that region was a lot worse than what we expected. Was it? Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, it, uh, most of the lines are, could use lining. We're trying to focus on the ones that are really bad compared to the others. And there is one line that goes north, south, kinda behind your shop, across is the creek out there, your shop on third. Um, honestly, that line probably should be completely torn out and removed, truthful. So what you've probably seen, our recommendation is we're gonna have a line project. And then we'll probably pull that out and kinda get you a cost assessment for what that is, so guys will have to figure out how much money we have. I do wanna talk to you, figure out what was budgeted for this year. I assume it was in fifty thousand dollar range, I'm sure.
So I don't know if you're in the loop for what happened a couple of weeks ago, that backup and all that, like that.
Down by the plant, yeah.
So if that stuff that needs to be kinda considered with.
That was, that was something we talked, maybe if we could put it in with region five.
Yeah.
But if region five is. Yeah, it's. Hold on that too, to figure out.
I don't know if the rest of you are familiar, there was a line that's, okay, I won't bore you with all that. But, uh, we were hoping maybe there'd be enough, you know, region five to be better or at least.
Have some money left over from.
Yeah, to do that and we're not fighting that, so.
Um, still we might have to scramble here and try to take some stuff out.
I don't know if you need to line that as much as, you probably need to do some of the tree root removal stuff, going through that, yeah. I mean, long run, it might be better to line it, but at least getting that stuff done.
Getting it flushed and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been trying to line most of the pipes that have had tree roots came in.
Yeah, so, so at least cut the tree roots out, even if you don't get a line, so.
Uh, nothing else. It, it kinda goes up on the list, you know?
Well, it is like main line that comes down to plants, what you know?
Yeah, so something would have.
That's where we got those problems too, was that line too.
Something would have.
We have like faculty sectors and stuff. Well, obviously if that line backs up, especially all those houses right there, they're, they're first in line, obviously.
Yeah.
Have the backups like they had, so. Oh, was it, was it just Johnson's house that got, uh, the sewer problem or was, or was there multiple houses on? I think there was multiple. I don't think it went like all the way up the whole road, but I think those first few houses there ended up with a little bit of backup, so. I know, I know Johnson's were the, were the first ones that called or whatever. That's what Charlie told me or whatever. I think they're the, or the south one on, on that strip. Yeah. Of, of the, of the like five, six houses that's there. When, when he called me, he had mentioned that there were a few. That's, uh, we, we didn't get him specifics on each house, but he had said that there were a few that had, they had backups. So I assume it's just those first couple of houses, obviously, yeah.
How, how long is the root problem issue? You went twice. You have any idea?
I don't know the specifics. They did the camera work and did all that stuff there over the weekend. I know that he just told me that the initial concern was that there was just a bunch of debris in the line around where the, the railroad tracks were. And so initially there was some concern, uh-oh, and do we have a collapse under the railroad tracks? Which, uh, the city that I primarily used to work for back in the day, the city of Washington, they had that happen here just a couple of years ago. And the problem railroad tracks is, you know, you can't just rip those out. You gotta bore underneath, so we had to bore new sewer line under there, which as deep as that all is going through there, that would, that would have been no small feat, so. Didn't seem like that ended up being, being the concern though, that when they, they ran the camera through there. There was just some debris and some crap, but it doesn't appear that it was collapsed under anything, so that part's good. There was just a lot of tree roots and I don't specifically. I don't know if they ended up providing the camera. Do you have the footage and everything from that? Okay, good.
That was only the one line on the east side of, of the road over there. Uh, there's just a short few pieces of line that go under the railroad, under the road and it ties into the main that goes to the plant. And Justin was supposed to be getting that video as well. So I, it must not have been.
I don't think he's gotten all the trees cleared to get the truck back there yet.
That's true.
He was gonna. So they're, so they're still working on it.
Yeah, okay. Right. And so we'll come back with, with probably recommendation at your next meeting, how to approach at least your lining project for, for this year. And, um, I know we're talking about the contract here in a little bit, but, uh, hopefully we can get that out, get it, get them started here at this fall, even, so. Okay, um. We also, uh, I know that Chad, you talked to these guys a little bit about the treat, water treatment out in the new subdivision out plus two. Um, we put together a draft treatment agreement and forwarded to you guys, so, um, which is maybe advice to let your attorney take a look at it if you see that. We'll leave that to you guys, but. Um, we also provided updated opinion of cost for the railroad parking line, cause you were thinking about maybe budgeting that sometime.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we received the video of the sewer line out in division that was repaired by a line, so contractor out here. Uh, we weren't gonna let them loose since we had a video to see that they fixed it correctly and they did, so, um. South slope still needs to do their repair down here on fourth street between Rose and Jefferson. Um, they were trying to work through with them. They get gum going and they stop, so we'll keep pushing, so. And so my report like this.
Okay, anything else to add on yours?
Um, so a couple of things. I know we talked about it and I know, I know the council wasn't thrilled about it. What did we end up agreeing to do about that dryer? I provided a quote to replace the dryer. I know we did some work on it a few years ago. But we kinda need to make a plan before winter. I don't have another good option on that, because Delta is kind of the main company in the area that does that type of work. So where did we end up on the dryer? Cause if we don't do anything, the plant's gonna freeze up this winter and I won't be able to control my RAS and any of my stuff, cause the pneumatic valves would freeze up, so.
Don't have very much options, is there?
There, there really isn't. And so that's kinda, if we haven't approved that yet and.
That's approved.
It was approved?
Probably.
Okay, I know there was some discussion, it was on there and I know, I, I know some, some of the council wasn't thrilled with it and I get that, but I just need con, confirmation, cause some of that happened. I know when Shelley lab was all kinda around that same time. Cause normally Shelley would just be like, oh yeah, it's all proved good to go, but, um, I know we're kind of in transition, so for good on that, I guess. I don't remember how long ago that was.
It was two or three meetings ago, I think.
It was a, yeah.
Do you recall?
Probably two.
Recall what the quote was.
Quote was like twenty-nine hundred dollars, three thou, it was right around three thousand dollars.
Man.
Somewhere in that general neighborhood. I don't remember, slap my head, but it was roughly that, so. And this was. Was Delta, is that you said is hard to work with or was that, or who pulled that? What is that other company you said it was like, that, I thought that you, you guys? We struggled for a while to, uh, so we did struggle a little bit to get them on site. I will admit that now. That's what I thought. Once they finally got me hooked back up with somebody, he's been Johnny on the spot. We just did a project in Hedrick and got the dryer going up in Hedrick. Um, so he got me a quote for blow, we need a new blower in Walford. So they, they've been very good. Once I finally got hooked, but there, there was some transition with the guy that I usually dealt with. And now that I'm back with someone who like, I have their direct number and I can talk to them, it's been fine. Okay. But there was a stretch there where someone left who I'd normally worked with and then they didn't have me. Yeah, cause I was thinking at one time you told us. It was a real problem. It was a real problem for a stretch, but they, now that I'm, like I said, now that I got someone again, it, it hasn't been. Yeah, you got your, your. It's been good, so I, I'm, I'm sure if we approve it, I, I'm not, I don't have any concerns at this point, but. That's what I. For a while there, yes, I, they were giving me the runaround a bit, so. I guess just let me know. If that has been approved, let me know, so I can go ahead and tell them and they can get everything ordered and we start making a plan.
I think we need to look that up, see if it was approved by Cal.
It's been within the last two months that I would have provided that, so.
I.
Just let me know.
I'm not sure if we did or not.
Okay.
So it would have been the.
If not.
On air first.
Yeah, if not, maybe put that on the agenda and, and approve it if you would.
Is that the new pump?
No, we did the, we did those two pumps in the digest.
Those six.
Yeah, that was separate.
A new blower or?
It's a new dryer.
Or a new dryer.
A new dryer, yeah. So we had put in one and the control board on it, and that was like three years ago when we did that, the control board on it went to hell. To replace the control board is as much money as it is just to put a new blower in, or new dryer. So it's like, well, let's just put the dryer in, so.
Okay.
Um.
Got brought up at the eight eleven meeting.
Eight eleven? It was approved on the night or was it just brought up?
Says there's a quote, I think.
I think.
You have to look at the minutes from, uh, from that meeting.
Um. Okay. Well, I said, just let me know what you end up finding out on that and if it hasn't been approved, I, I would ask that we.
It looks like it was talked about during the, um, staff reports, but wasn't an actual agenda item. Um, and we didn't have a quote for replacement at that time, but we're working on getting quotes. Says it has replaced in the last three years, potential cause was a power surge. We do not have a quote for replacement yet, but are working on getting quotes from other companies.
I sent, let's see here. I'm pretty certain I forwarded that. If I did, then yeah, it's definitely on me, but I thought I had forwarded that. I'll go back and look. Uh, we don't need to keep wasting time.
Yeah, I can get it put on the next agenda.
Let's do that. We'll get it on the next.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so yeah, maybe that's partly my fault. I'll, I'll go back and look. If I didn't forge you the quote, then yeah, obviously that one's on me for sure.
Meanwhile, let's look at it.
Okay.
I just wanna be on the minutes.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll go back and look and see what I got on that one. So then the last couple of things, um. Uh, spreading sludge is also quite the battle. I, I do have a commitment from the guy who did it a couple of years ago that he's going to do it. I asked for an updated quote. I, that should already be budgeted. Because I had, um, I had talked to Shelley about that when we were gonna budget last time, that we're definitely gonna spread sludge. So it should roughly be budgeted to do that. Um, so I would still like to get an exact number for you, but I'm, I know we budgeted for that already, so. I don't understand, it was like fifteen thousand some odd dollars when we did it a couple of years ago. I don't anticipate that's gonna go up drastically, so I just plan on somewhere in that general range. Like I said, it's already kind of been approved, so. Um, basically that's kinda one of those things. As soon as they can get us in the order, I'm just gonna kinda have to do it, so just kinda be aware of that. Um. Either, uh, Tim had mentioned the subdivision already. I, I've had a couple more discussions with them about some stuff. I had to rein them in because at one of the meetings with the new engineers he's working with, he basically went, oh, the city says everything's great and approved and there's no problems. And I had to be like, wait, no, stop, that's not true. So I'm, uh, I'm making sure before any decisions are made that the city is gonna be in the loop about what's gonna be done out there. They talked about maybe moving away from a softening system and looking at an HMO system. Um, but they also just quoted him eight hundred grand to do that and I don't think he's gonna wanna spend that kinda money to do that, so. I, I think he's still wanting really hard to just do the softening system, but I've been, it's absolutely clear with everyone. Until we get assurances and until engineers, we do some studies and do some stuff and we get actual assurances that it won't affect our chloride, we're not signing off on anything. So I've been really clear about that. Their argument is, well, people will just put in softeners anyway. And I'm like, that's true. But this is one of the few times the city has real control over this, so we're gonna exercise it. So I've been really clear about that, so I'll keep sitting in the loop with my discussions on my end. You, Tim, you're in on all that too, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and I talked to, I talked to Matt Wildman about that and I had called him to be like, hey, and he's like, yeah, we need to get something together on that. So Matt, Matt's already been in the loop on that.
You did say eight hundred thousand.
I did say eight hundred thousand. So. Yeah, well, I mean, I know that sounds crazy, but the fact of the matter is, any type of, if you're gonna have an engineer design any type of treatment system of any remote size at all anymore, it's a million dollars, it just is. My dad has a little mobile home park.
Crazy.
That was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put in a tiny little package plant at a tiny little mobile home park. And had we not done the work ourself, um, we saved on that, but we would easily would have spent that if we just hired contractors to it. So it's, yeah, it's very, very, very expensive for any type of treatment system at all. By the time you engineer it and have it built and know all the stuff, it's, it's atrocious, so. Tim, do you remember when, or I don't know if you guys would have been involved in it, but do you remember when Gaddises did their addition out there in Shoeville? Okay, okay, nevermind then. But I, I was thinking they had to do the same type of deal, Willie did the same type of deal. Yeah, and it, there's not a municipal Shoeville, but there are like, um, wastewater system and there's a couple of different systems out there. We operate the main one. And so, yeah, if you had to hook up to that, you know, there'd be some some stuff you'd have to get approval from with them too, so.
Um, that, that treatment agreement I mentioned during the report was actually, you know, codifying what you just talked about the type of treatment that they is, well, specifically one is not allowed, which is the softening. Um, but then, uh, you know, you, they, they shouldn't do anything of a ratio or. It's great, so that's what Willie spent.
Well, poor guy got taken for a ride.
He did.
In the sense that the water source they ended up going with, no one talked to him about the super high probability that it would be that radium in it. I mean, I, listen, I'm just a peon operator. If, if anyone would have asked me, hey, should we punch into the Jordan? My very first question would have said, are you prepared to deal if there's a radium problem? Then the very first question I asked, so I don't know how we got through well drillers and how we got through working with another engineering firm and no one at any point said to them, if you punch down into the Jordan, there is a high probability you're gonna have radium issues and if you're a public water supply, you're gonna have to treat for that and it's going to be very expensive. I just don't know how nobody along the line made him aware of that, so. My point is that she's not.
Fall back on Swisher.
Well, none of it Swisher's, the, yeah.
Exactly.
None of it Swisher's problem, so.
They hooked up to that, it becomes their problem.
If, if, if there's potential it becomes our problem if he goes with the softening system. Now, again, the argument that you can make here is that you know, the city of Swisher, it's perfectly within people's rights. There's no ordinance against softeners, so you could just make the argument, well, every single person here is just gonna put a softener in anyway, so what difference does it make? You can make that argument, but again, what we would argue with the city is that, yes, but we can control this one source. And since we have control here, we're gonna ex, ex our control, cause why wouldn't we, right? So. And I think, I think everybody at this council is sitting here thinking that when that development was going in, that everybody was gonna have a water softener anyway. Yeah. I'm pretty, I mean.
But this is pretty much.
I mean, that's, that's all I ever thought, that they were gonna all have water soft.
Yeah, but this radium, that's too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, I know, I mean, it's not no big shock to us that they're gonna have to have softeners in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're gonna have to treat for the radium as well, it's just. So that's, that's where your antiques and the whole lot.
Well, the soft, yeah, and the softing itself removes the radium, and you know, there's no wastewater. Issues with radium, like you guys won't be have a permitted limit for radium or anything like that on wastewater, it's just. The chlori- so, and one other thing with this is, I got your permit renewal, I was just waiting on this last little thing to get signed, everything else has been submitted. I I don't anticipate your permit's gonna change drastically, however. With chloride still being the type of thing that it is, it wouldn't surprise me if your chloride testing. Became a little more, technically, you only have a monthly test right now, and back in the day. When Chris was the mayor, he asked us to do it weekly, and so we did. But frankly, you guys have been under the limit, it's just more of a cost for you to do that, so I kind of quit doing that. I could see them making it a weekly requirement, and it's like a twenty one dollar test, so it's not the end of the world. But um, I could see them doing that, but I don't anticipate you'll have any other changes.
It was just a short time.
The weekly stuff, yeah, we just did that for, and your permit's only monthly, so that's primarily what we've been doing, it's just monthly stuff. I could see them possibly giving you a weekly requirement, but I otherwise I don't see your permit changing. Really, it'll, it'll be the same stuff you guys are doing now, so. But that's all done, that's for a five year period, so once this is approved, they're gonna give us a draft. Um, I will send to the clerk, and I'm sorry, clerk, you need to tell me your name, so I know. Mallory, okay, so Mallory, we will get a draft permit. All we need to do is post a copy of it here at City Hall, and you need to just tell me when that's done, and then that will start the thirty day public. Notice, so to speak, and then we will, um, once that's done, no one's gonna care or say anything. Then we'll say to the state, we did our thirty day notice, and then they will finalize the permit, and then it'll be good for five years after that, so.
Okay.
And then other than that, we talked about the, one other thing, my report, we already talked about, so. That's what I got for you. Me, questions for any?
They can work it on that. Blockage and everything.
Oh, no big deal, and I, you know, I. Thanks. I wanted, yeah, they they called me cuz he couldn't get a hold of anyone else, and I kind of felt like, well, hey, I'm the sewer guy, we gotta back up.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Do it, and yes, get it done. I did do the report to the state, um, we have to call within twenty four hours of being aware. And so I called them, um, that happened on a Saturday, so I'm gonna call them on a Sunday, and the lady I talked to is one I work with all the time, and I know her very well, so. She handled it and we're good. So, okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank, have a good one.
Okay, I'm doing regular business.
Hang on, uh, I got a question on your, for the mayor, um, I seem to be starting to take the trashcans away today, has that been resolved now?
Well, as of last Monday, Mark actually talked to somebody in Chicago.
For LRS?
Uh huh, and told him, this is what's up, you got till Friday. To give us an answer, and we get to start moving stuff, or we'll take it into our hands and disperse them as we want. Uh, as far as Mark knows, nobody called him, but they showed up today to start taking their stuff.
I drove by today and there was a trailer there, and he, they only put like forty or fifty of them on that trailer, you know.
They were there this morning, starting to haul them on.
Yeah, they didn't get a whole lot of them haul the way today, but they did get some of them anyway.
They slowed down, we will take it into our hands at that point in time.
Yeah, I I would imagine they're probably coming back. When I seen him, it was, you know, four o'clock or something, so it was getting towards the end of the day, so.
Yeah, they were there, they were there this morning.
All right, that's just kind of, I had a lot of questions about that around town, so I just kind of wanted to. I really wanted to get him before, I mean, we'd get an October snowstorm, you know?
Mm-hmm, well, we said, we've been pushing, and the lawyer said, let's do our due diligence. He said, I'd rather give them more time, be better on our side if something went wrong.
I I, yeah, so, I really think if, as much time as we've given them already, they wouldn't have a leg to stand on. So, I mean, we, they were supposed to have it by August fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, the only other question was, uh, for you is, uh. When are we gonna get rid of that slide? It's been laying there for.
As soon as we can get trashcans out of the way to get it on the trailer to go. Got to, we'll try to make it a point by the end of next week.
Okay.
If you, if one of them trailer wants, fuck must take it off.
Cuz we had to go pick up trashcans.
Ones around town that people couldn't get down.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was.
That's all the questions I had, and people have brought my attention to it.
Okay, I'm doing the business. First one is resolution thirty six dash twenty twenty five, approval of fiscal year radiance for employees.
Motion approved resolution thirty six twenty twenty five.
Second. Um, roll, Poojil.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Ene.
Hi.
Stag.
Hi.
So passes. Ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty five, based on second reading.
How we? So this was messed up in the last meeting, the date was wrong on it, so it was actually on first reading, and now it needs to go to um, second and third. Here.
Well, we can't put it on third and final yet because it's not on the agenda, right?
Um, it is second and third considerations, um, and so we need to place it on final, and then at the next meeting, it'll be on final.
Which ordinance is this, or am I?
It is.
Twenty 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 five.
It's just amending the floodplain.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Motion to place ordinance twenty twenty five on second.
Second.
Roll. Or not roll.
Yeah, roll.
Okay, roll. Poojil.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Ene.
Hi.
Stag.
Hi.
HR agree agreement for sanitary sewer lining project for twenty twenty six. This is continuation of.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is put together, yeah, put together, so blind, and uh, have been. Either bid or quoted, it's kind of on the line right now of what's required. Um, then it's like part time uh, construction and stretch.
Motion approved HR green agreement, second.
Roll. Poojil.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Ene.
Hi.
Stag.
Hi.
Uh, wastewater grant. Next.
What's this for?
So this is something that was just sent to us, um, for some, for a grant, um, it has. It's for smaller towns to get grants for improving your wastewater infrastructure. Um, I don't know if it's something we'd be interested in, or um, if it's something that we. I'm not sure who would apply for it, I don't know if it would be, we would have HR Green look into it, or. What was that?
Flores, that grant writing issue.
Yeah, she's really good at that, I know, but you're talking about having identified projects to go up to the grant, correct?
Yeah.
Which at this time, we don't have any.
Well, we have the wastewater, don't we?
We don't have city water, but we do have wastewater.
So, I don't know, I I haven't seen a grant, truthfully, or the application. You know, potentially the line we're talking about, it's so bad in region five, if Chad has something at the plant, something like that, perhaps. Again, I'm reading the grant, but that might be something that.
Yeah, cuz you, we don't even know what the grant would actually cover, like, without reading it through.
Is that a match, a matching grant?
No.
I don't know what, what the terms are.
Yeah.
Don't see it there.
It's capped at five hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But yeah, five hundred thousand per apkin per year.
You have to start before September twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
I'd say if we look into it.
I think we, is that, so is that something we could send to you guys to apply for?
Well.
Because you guys.
We can, we can, yeah, I mean, we, yeah, if you wanted us to fill out the grant, we could probably do that, so. It'll have to come back to you guys for approval before it gets sent.
We, we have to. The application deadline's November third, so it would have to be at next meeting, we'd have to approve it, so I think. For me, we send it to him, I mean, five hundred thousand, there's a lot of wastewater projects that we could do, what's five hundred thousand?
Yes. But what's that?
There's eight million dollars.
Hundred thousand per apkin, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know.
They give out that one eight million.
Okay.
Each apkin can only give.
A lot of times, sometimes.
Both way down, okay.
Are we, are we identified as a disadvantaged community?
You, you don't have to be, priority is considered.
That's one of the priorities, top of the line.
Yes, it is a priority consideration for funding is given to all of those, which some of them we do qualify for.
Usually, the first item is top priority, isn't it, probably? Probably, you you do have some elements in time. So perhaps, we'd have to look at that, maybe one of these projects could be located and one of them is. I think it's worth pressing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can take a look at it, if we think that it's a stretch, we can come back to you guys to.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna waste your money either, so.
Great.
Okay, so, we'll go to the next, we have a credit card policy.
So.
We ordered a sample.
Yeah, this is just an informal mo- informal motion is called, so it's just to discuss. Um, a credit card policy, I think I brought up in the last meeting, that our credit card policy does not include all of the things that we do. So provided a sample that we can make changes to, and then I can come up with like a final draft to actually. Um, do a, to change the policy, a resolution to change the policy. So this is just like a very standard one, but it includes um, a acknowledgement form, acknowledgement form. And it also um, includes, um. More uses, before our policy just said that, you know, we could use it for registration. Uh, for um, travel, but it didn't say, like, we were putting our Zoom license on it, that wasn't technically supposed to happen. Um, Justin uses his for a lot of other things too, so this kind of encompasses that, that you can use it for. Um, anything necessary that you couldn't write a check for easily, so.
You ready to come up with a draft then, Mallory?
Yes.
Okay.
So leaving it from us, anything?
If you see anything that needs changed, or if there, if there's anything you see on this that you'd like taken out, or anything that you would like put in, um. Then just let me know and I can mark it and.
Is this our current one now, or is this?
No, our current one now is basically nothing, so it just says you can use it for travel and lodging, and there's no other stipulations, so. Um, when I do the resolution, um, and put it on the agenda to review that, I'll put a copy of ours and then the new one. But.
Well, e- even though ours said it could only be used for that, we've been using it for a lot more stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can sure.
Then it all came to head, and then we thoroughly canceled hers, and then everything else got canceled.
Yeah, I just, I looked at the policy for guidance on applying for a card, and there's no guidance on, um. Who can have a card, applying for a card or anything like that, so we put it on the last meeting, just to make sure we could get them, um, before doing this.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion of possible action on how to handle businesses dumping that are rough file. I mean, this comes from the gentleman we had clean up everything down there, was down there to pick up his. Uh, truck, oh, and he saw a contractor pull in, dump this stuff, he mentioned to him that he's not supposed to do that. Contractor just rubbed him off and left, Austin happened to follow them up, it was at seven hundred of Swisher V Drive, which is next to Darryl. And they were doing tree work up there, or brush work, whatever, and. It, it is a citizen's property, but it was contracted out, contractors should not be dumping. On our site, cuz it's listed as right on the sign, no commercial dumping.
What, what makes the difference of, uh, say, my dad, or your, or anybody, anybody that's lived in this town for. Fifty years, paying taxes in this town, and they're too old to, to get it taken, to do it themselves, like me and Cody could go up and. Do our house ourselves and take it right down there, right, that's all legal.
Mm-hmm.
So what's the, what's, as long as it's coming off of a citizen's property. Why would it matter what is being dumped down there, just because you had to hire it done? What if I I had a tree so fricking high that I could?
This is the discussion.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking, what, what, what makes that, what makes that wrong, just because you had to hire somebody to do it?
I don't know if it's, if that part of it's wrong, I mean, it's just commercial dumping as a whole.
But that commercial dumping is not coming from outside of Swisher.
Right.
It's not coming from Fairfax, not coming from, it's coming from a resident of Swisher, I don't.
Define, define commercial.
Business takes on the tree.
Pardon?
A business takes on the tree.
Okay.
This, this.
I took, I took, alright, I I took a big tree down last year, and I I've got the, the equipment, and I've got the friends to help me. Didn't, didn't cost me a dime, I took the tree down. Neighbor had the same, same issue, he had a, he had a tree that he needed to take some trimming, trims down. But he didn't have the equipment or the, the help to do it, so why did I get to put my tree down there for nothing?
No, I agree.
Huh?
No, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
My, my whole thing is, what, what's our proposal to even curb this or stop this?
You, I don't think you can.
You can't.
You can't, I mean, the only thing we wanna stop is like, somebody like, like somebody does it in Fairfax and brings it.
And I get that, but even still. What are you gonna do to stop?
Right, right, exactly.
Set by the gate and.
We have tried to do this in the past, put locks down there, having people monitor it or whatever, and they still.
Yeah.
Come in and dump.
Yeah, but I really, do you think people from out of town are doing that?
Oh, yeah. A bunch of people come in from North Liberty.
There is.
Well, that, yeah, but who's gonna sit there and catch it?
I, so in our, in our consent agenda, we just paid two thousand dollars to have the big stumps cleared out. So, and just a thought is like, maybe make a rec- a size regulation, if you're going to dump trees, they need to be split to a manageable size so they can be burnt.
Is there a sign down there, I haven't been down there lately, is there a sign down there that says for citizens only?
Yes.
Okay, I I haven't been down.
I guess that, that's the contributing factor there, and they pay taxes, they, you know, they shouldn't have to, my neighbor shouldn't have to pay. To do, to deliver those down there, cuz I, I didn't pay anything, I just did it myself.
Right.
Uh, and if you can't. I don't know how you're gonna monitor it. And, and I tell you, the biggest problem is, that needs to be burned more often, I know it's, it's the issue with smoke, but it it gets piled so big. It don't burn down. And you either have to take care of it on a regular basis, or don't do it at all, and I hate to shut it down because it's real handy for the citizens to be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a real plus for everybody, I mean, even my neighbors this week were all a little, they were pulling out their grubs or their shrubs and everything.
Okay, we, we, we spent two thousand dollars cleaning it up, okay, but the same total we paid. Uh, twenty seven hundred dollars for extra police.
Right.
So we, where do we stop this, you know, this, the extra police is for a certain be-. Turned the benefit of certain businesses.
Right.
This, this uh, dump down there serves all the citizens, has to use it, and sure, it costs us two thousand dollars. But it costs us twenty, twenty seven hundred dollars, we just wrote this last night, for a police, and it looks like we're gonna look at uh, extending it again, which. I'm not saying that we don't need it, but I think that's some, we can look at our responsibilities, uh, but I guess I.
My hope then is, there's no way for us to police this, right, the idea of locking the gate though and calling Justin is not feasible.
No, exactly, that's what I'm saying, that's the idea, this could be done.
Especially when most people are doing this work on weekends.
Right, yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
I do, I think if you do see a commercial business dumping there, you could take pictures for documentation, then turn it into.
Yeah.
You know, City Hall, cuz then we could go back on them, but I guess I don't even know what fine.
I, I don't know what, what recourse we would have.
We have to talk to Mark and see.
Well, if it's posted for, I mean.
I understand, but I don't know if there's a fine associated.
Yeah.
That's their, that's their treats, and, no, I just took down a big, uh. That's their, that's their treats. Now, I just took down a big uh. Cottonwood tree at my place. It was uh, seventy, seventy-seven inches across. It was huge, eighty foot tall. Well, I paid to have it haul away, haul away, cause it wouldn't fit in there.
Right.
Yeah, but you know, and I think people will use their common sense, you know, cause I knew that tree. The ashtray I done a year ago, it would fit down there. So I took it down there. And I got a guy that needed the big logs, little firewood, so he come and took and gave that away.
I don't really think there's anything we can really do about this. I mean, it, it's gonna be a problem every once in a while. Somebody that shouldn't be dumping down, there's gonna dump down there.
Yeah.
I mean, but, but I don't, putting, putting restrictions on. A homeowner that's just, that's a, a citizen of this town, that's.
I don't, I mean, we're not gonna do that.
I've, I've done several times, clean that. Or they get you back in there. People just back in there and dump and just dump right to the road. Instead of coming around and using the common sense. So, and I see that somebody cleaned it up, uh, cause they. Coming towards the road, somebody just cleaned it out to, must be today sometime.
Yeah, so. Any ideas you guys have to do this? Keep it open and move forward. Uh, discussion on possible action when city attorney Mark retiring at the end of the year. Um, he has a firm he's contacted that only represents municipalities. And they would be very excited to work with us. They're in the same. Realm as him for post. And he works very well with them already. So he would like to bring them by and. Do an introduction.
Yep.
So.
Motion to, alright, I guess I don't even know. I, I can't, but yeah.
Yeah, gotta have like a city attorney, so.
Mark's done a great job for us. I mean, we've listened to him for, I don't even know how many years, so I think his recommendations.
Carry the weight.
Yeah, they are.
They are.
Do we have to put that something like that up to bid? I'm not sure.
I would, how do you, how do you get a bid on? You don't know what you're gonna do later.
Yeah, I, I would also.
Might be more apt to not listen to Mark than you to go. You do calls, qualifications. So, um, I don't know that you're required to do it.
It'd be the same as contracting any other firm for any services to the city. Like, we don't get bids, so you guys come up.
Now, when, what you did originally and she went through calls to hire us. We went through interviews and stuff.
Right.
There are companies, and that's how we were sold.
But I don't think you have to.
Alright, when Mark was talking, we can just make the decision that we can clarify with him.
You can't get a bid, cause he just doesn't know what he's gonna have a.
You would, you would just, yeah. I mean, like you could do is your own search. You know, and then maybe narrow it down to like different law, maybe two or three law firms or something. And then have an interview or something.
Do we know enough to interview?
I don't.
Probably not, I don't.
I mean.
But I'm just saying here, we got a recommendation from our current, alright, for the city.
Bloody Mark, I've known Mark for years.
Okay, but I'm just saying to me, this, this is pretty much more weight here.
Definitely use a partner in it.
Are you all okay with me reaching out to Mark and confirming?
Yes, yes.
For sure. Daryl, to your question, you can discuss rates, you know, hourly rates.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but you know, that, yeah.
So. Hopefully they're still in the same ballpark as what Mark was, so we don't have to have. Yeah. Okay, next one is nuisance property seventy-eight rows.
Yeah, we got a lot going on here. So property got sold though. The property got, so we have a civil citation files, right? With T B M G properties.
So what I, I'm coming in at the end of this. I've been obviously in the meetings, but I don't know all the things. Um, so the mayor might know more, but from what I understand, this has not been filed. It's here for approval to file it. This is what they are filing.
And we're filing. That's a civil citation to E M.
Yes.
T B M G properties.
Yes.
It's T B M G. Is that, that's his girlfriend's property always?
Yes, I believe so. Is that correct?
This, yeah, this, this is new to me.
Okay.
Where, where, where am I finding this here?
This is under seventy-eight rows.
So then.
That's not.
Numbers come first.
So then. Appears that there's a. Court date of October. Twenty ninth or something?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty ninth at eight AM. Um, who is, is Mark there to represent the city?
I would assume so. Uh, that's an assumption. I would think he would represent the city.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so yeah, motion to file a civil citation.
Okay, second.
Let's see, are you, I'll tell you, but you're. Are you addressing the right individual? Because that property got sold.
Yes, it's.
This is, this is all of the old information as well.
Yeah, this is, this is everything.
This is just all.
Civil citation goes to T B M G properties. That's who purchased the house at the. Uh, sheriff's sale.
Yeah.
I'd say we do what we have to do. Yeah, uh, roll. Poojil.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Enoch.
Hi.
Stag.
Hi.
Move. Last is a. Four sixteenth, Third Street, request to waive return check fee.
That's us under.
Third Street.
Is it all the way at the top?
Uh, no, it's not. It's got seventy-eight something, but I can't find four sixteen. And I can't find four fifteen, so. I guess I didn't know for sure where that was at.
I don't see it.
I don't see it anywhere.
Maybe I didn't scan this out then. Um, but it's just a form I haven't filled out. They just stopped in, so I filled out one of their requests to be on council agenda. Um, and it, they wrote a check off with a closed account by mistake. Um, and then did not want to pay the thirty dollar fee. They did pay the outstanding balance. And requested um, from council that the fee be waived.
Motion to waive. Sorry.
Poojil. Klein.
Hi.
Enoch.
Hi.
Stag. Alright. Okay, down to the journey.
No, 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 no.
No.
We have the citizen contact for the park.
Oh, that's right. No, worry about that.
Um, so this was a contact us form that came in, uh, just saying that they had been to the park, noticed that the bathrooms were not very clean. I did let them know that um, they were getting cleaned once a week. And so if they were there like on Sunday after Swisher View Sports for five days in a row, they may not have been. Very clean, but we do have a part-time person. I talked to Justin. He said that will be one of his duties to clean Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
What, what week was Justin on vacation?
The.
Was that in September?
It was in Septem.
Towards the end of September?
No.
No, it was August.
Okay, so.
End of.
I just didn't know if that was the week that he was on or.
Uh, si- second week of August. We'll be, uh, activities pretty much every day up there now, don't they? This time of the year? Not now with school starting.
They're about down, done for the year now.
Yeah, but I mean, during the summertime.
Yeah, they're in the summertime. Well, they have soccer, baseball.
Yeah.
Uh, now they can do flag football, don't they? Yeah. I think the flag football just ended last Thursday.
Yes.
Or something like that.
I think youth sports are done or they have, this is the last week, maybe.
Is it gonna be too much to ask and just swing by every, uh, of course, the maintenance, this part-time guy is not. Full-time, is he?
No.
With all the summertime, will he be more full-time or not?
No.
No, twenty-four hours per week. Right now, um, Justin let me know he's gonna be working um, a half day on Monday, a half day on Friday. Tuesday, Wednesday, off Thursdays.
Okay, the trouble is with that much activity, the summertime, now you, you buy it, maybe that restroom daily, cause it's gonna be.
I mean, it's all stuff we can address for next season by all means.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if you wanna do that, I. I know what she's talking about, cause I, like, we, about a year ago, we had news on that stuff there.
And I get that.
Um.
How you get around it? We can't really afford to do it every day, but.
That's where I am. There has to be. Some sort of helpful buy-in also from the Swis- Swisher View Sports. I'm all for supporting them constantly, like raising money and doing all that. Um. But like, we have to get some sort of balance with them, like. If they go up there and they see it's a mess, like if they have access to it or whatever, I don't know how it looks, but we can't expect Justin to be up there five days.
Can you do the equipment for it? Have their, their use.
So that's what, that's what we had most of the summer is Justin kept the stock up there that they could get into quickly. If they saw something that needed to be addressed immediately. I don't know how, if that was continually kept up like it should have been. I think it is.
You, you know, like if we're, you're, we're all talking about like next summer and stuff, you know, how it's used so much. If, if we're actually contracting out that. Mowing, that frees up, that frees up.
It does.
Ten, fifteen hour probably a week that. Oh, I mean, when you put you guys.
But I mean, for most of the summer, it was two days a week is what Justin and Dylan were doing. Uh, Friday was mandatory before Dylan went home. And then, uh, I think it was Wednesday was the other day. They were making sure.
It was clean?
Uh-huh.
Well, we did, that we did, yeah, we didn't start that until like. Like June.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it's just unbelievable.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to keep an eye on, like, next summer, we're gonna have to come, next spring, we're gonna have to have a plan of. This is Justin's. There are maybe not Justin's responsibility, but Justin's department's responsibilities. I, I think, I mean. Especially, I mean, the, the big thing is to have it cleaned out on Friday, because it gets, it gets rented and used a lot on Saturday and Sundays, you know?
I, I agree that they're responsible to keep those clean, but I also agree with Cody when he says whoever's using. The facilities up there in their.
There, you need some assistance.
Yeah, they need to also kind of monitor that and not leave it in such disarray. So, you know, maybe something needs to be said.
I think the youth sports does a pretty good job of it already, though, right?
You know, I don't know.